Good evening. And welcome to the October 8, 2012, Kittle Hill's Board of Commissioners meeting. And happy Columbus Day to all. If you'll join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And ask everyone to please join us in a moment of silence before we start our meeting. Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
So made.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next actual item on the agenda moves into public comment. This is the time set aside this evening for anyone to bring forth comments or items to the board. We did have a sign up sheet and we'll start. We had two individuals sign up to speak this evening and then we will call on anyone in the audience who didn't sign up that wishes to speak. We do ask if you are speaking this evening, if you're speaking as an individual, please limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're speaking on behalf of a group, try to keep those comments to five minutes, please. And first, this evening, welcome Greg Roberts to speak.
I'm Greg Roberts, owner of Compass Rose, the pottery store on about mile post nine. Come tonight to do a couple things. One, as far as the appearance commission goes, I'd be perfectly happy to serve. If y'all need some extra help on that, it's fine, I'll help. Mainly though, I've come to ask, and I've discussed this with Mayor Davies in the last month or two, the meeting on October 24th, having to do with outdoor display and potential regulations and such. I think it's nice, it's good to have a communication with the businesses. I would ask the board to consider broadening the October 24th meeting to include the entire business community. I think it's very important that we have increased cooperation and increased communication between all of us. I think the businesses at this point are in a very delicate time. I don't know if y'all saw the economic indicators, but for Hyde, Curry, Tuck and Dare through July, all the retail sales were down. People are coming, thank goodness, but doesn't necessarily mean they're spending money. I don't know if y'all have heard, I believe the bowling alley in Nags Head has shut down. My understanding is because they couldn't get cooperation from their bank to continue. I don't know what it will become. There are rumors about that perhaps Wings is going to buy it. If so, I think Israel, who owns Wings, understands the importance of recreation. If they don't buy it, I'm really scared it's going to be another national chain. We have a lot of national chains that have come into town in the last year, last two years, and I think that that's part of what we need to be aware of. Businesses that we've got, mine included, we are small, we are unique, we are esoteric, and we are also the reason that people like coming here. We're not, our beach is not like Virginia Beach or Ocean City. We are very different from those places. And part of what makes us different is our very uniqueness. We've got strange little stores, as opposed to Autozone and Lowe's, places that people can go where they live. Really, I'd just like to reiterate, I do think it's very important that we have communication fully between the town, between the businesses. I think this is a good opportunity to begin that. I think we're at the right time of the year to begin that. And I would ask you all to consider that as a very important first step in continuing what we have. And let's be, I think we can be a leader among all the towns and the county. We have a lot of shared concerns. I know tonight you talk about a noise ordinance, and that seems to be on everybody's mind. That's fine, but we can advance all of the agendas, I think, together, and we can all be better for it. And that's all.
Thank you. Next on the sign up, we had Marlene Roberts-Brantley. And I forgot to mention when you approached the lecture to speak this evening, if certainly you'll identify yourself by name, but also address, please. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Marlene Roberts-Brantley, and I guess you would say that I'm great partner in the Compass Rose business. And my address is actually in Mantio, but I have a business here in Kittle Hill. I'm also a realtor, as most of you know. And I obviously agree with Greg. Think that the workshop that y'all want to do should be open to any type of business, realtors, restaurants, gift shops, anybody that you can get out to attend. I do want to thank the board and the staff for the nice ads that came out in the paper last week. A few of us saw them, but it's hard to get the business community to pay attention. One of the biggest things that I think you need to have all inclusive meetings is, the one thing that I find in the town is that we breed a lot of rumors. And you're a fairly new board with a different complexion. And I, I think if you want the people to be here so that out in the community, they know what's going on, and it's not rumors. And the other thing that Greg said about national chains, there have been visitor, Tourist Bureau does visitor surveys, and the one thing they always hit on is, they like us because we're different. They don't like us to be anywhere USA. I mean, the more franchises we have and the more big business that we have, this is what they have at home. And they want to come here because we're different. So anyhow, I thank you very much and look forward to the workshop.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening at this public comment? Anyone else? Okay, well, there will be another opportunity later this evening if you do decide you would like to address the board at that point. So we'll move on to response to public comment. And I think, can I actually, first, before we talk about the suggestion that both of you had about broadening the agenda for the meeting on the 25th, Greg, we will be making appointments tonight to the various boards. I'm aware that, I think we have at least one spot left on the, what's, Appearance Committee. So if you are interested, please submit an application. Mary can grab an application for you, or they're online. But I know we will have at least one spot still available, based on the numbers that submitted. So then for everyone, and for those of you who may not have followed, we do have on the 25th, I think that's the right date.
24th.
Or is it the 24th? I'm sorry, the 24th. We have scheduled to hold a meeting. At the time when we scheduled it, it was to address the outdoor display that had, this has come up numerous times before this board and the planning board. And it was determined that when we were looking at discussing, that was not the appropriate time for the business owners. It was during the peak of the season. So it was, the board made a decision to delay that until this meeting in October. And at that time, it was indicated that the meeting would solely focus on that. And the request then is for us to consider just having a broad business forum. So, how does the board feel?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I agree. That's fine.
Okay. So when we advertise which we'll be doing after this meeting for that forum, we can just really try to encourage any business to come here. And we'll just try to, we'll create a working agenda that night then, based on the topics that people put forth. So please help us spread the word about that meeting on the 24th. I think it's scheduled for 7:00 PM. So if you'll help us get the word out, that would be great. And all topics would be welcome. So, thank you.
Also, it's a public meeting, so anybody's invited members, the general public, anybody who would like to come is welcome.
Great, thank you.
I just want to address one thing that both Greg and Marlene both said about national chains. I get hit up on that all the time, about national chains coming here. And this is probably more of a question for Steve than anybody, but one of the problems that you have is I don't think we can regulate where we disallow national chains coming here. We're surely not out there inviting the chains to come. You know, they have the right to develop property when they purchase it, however they feel. And as long as they meet our requirements, they can build. I don't think anybody in this town's happy that all the chains that are here now are here. But you get into property rights and plenty of things Steve could talk about that we can't tell all those, and they can't buy that piece of property and build on it. It would be nice if we had people that would step up to the plate and buy some of these properties and build on them. But as both of y'all touched on it, I'm a businessman myself, money's tight. Trying to come up with money to buy these properties and put something new in, it's almost impossible for the locals right now. There's a few that maybe could, but it's just a tough time, and these national chains have deep pockets. You know, they can pretty much do as they please where us locals, you know, it'd be impossible for me to buy that piece of property and open up a bakery or something like that. So as much as we don't like seeing them come in, I don't mean that in a negative way, we'd rather see some diversification, but you start dealing in property rights, you just can't tell people you can't do it. It's just, if Israel buys that property, which I've been told that he has, I haven't been told whether he plans on tearing the building down yet or not, but if he decides to put another Wings there, we get another Wings. And we can't stop him from doing it, unfortunately. I don't mean that bad toward anybody, but you know, our job is to make sure they meet our ordinances, and as long as they meet our ordinances, we get what we get.
I think it's important to note quickly, and maybe everybody realizes that, that bowling alley is in Nags Head though, not Kittle Hill. Okay. Just want to make sure that we don't have any misconceptions out there. So, obviously, it's part of our community and we're all concerned what happens, but just didn't want anyone turning around, coming back to us, asking us to help solve that. Okay. We can move on now to old business. We have one item under old business, and that is looking at the draft ordinance for Chapter 130, General Offenses, the noise ordinance. I'm not sure if, we'll just do some history here real quickly. This has been something that's been on our agenda several times. We've also to prepare for bringing this into a final draft form. The police department has been instrumental in helping gather data for us, doing, excuse me, noise readings throughout the summer. They also hosted a noise demo two months ago where they had trash trucks and lawn equipment and a boombox and lots of noises for us to hear, both inside this building and then to go outside and hear, and also take the decibel readings. So we've also been watching and, you know, hearing the comments that have come forth to the county. They're also, this is on their agenda as well. So there's been a lot of work that's gone into really trying to create an ordinance that takes into consideration what the citizens and the visitors feel on appropriate noise and time for that, but also respectful of the business owners and how the noise ordinance could affect their operations as well. So thank you, Steve, for the work you've done on this. Do you want to introduce it from here?
Well, there's some things I need to point out to you because you may want to make an election as to which way you do a couple of the things I've suggested in here. I've written it one way, but as we go through it, you'll see there's some obvious selections you can make as to how you want to do this. I guess the first thing you'll notice, and what I did is I just took the entire ordinance and redrafted it. Instead of trying to fix what we had, it was just easier to start from front to back and just try to get the redundancy out. And I know I didn't, but I tried to do that. But the, one change you'll see is in the definition of daytime and nighttime hours. Daytime hours was defined at 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and nighttime hours are from 11:01 PM to 6:59 AM. We do have, now have a definition for noise disturbance, which also takes in our unreasonably loud disturbance or excessive noise. And that provides that that is also a noise disturbance. And that all becomes important when you look at the definitions as you go through to see what is prohibited in town. We've adopted the noise level measurement techniques of the A-Wating system for our noise meter, which is the industry standard that everybody is using. And we put in there that it's to be operated in accordance with the manufacturer's directions and calibrated, and as I understand it, ours has to be calibrated every year. Is that correct, Chief? So every year, we will have to have it calibrated by the manufacturer. Then we get down to alternative measurement techniques, and this is where we get into what was in our old ordinance about the complaints of two people and a law enforcement officer. We've retained that because there will be times when there are going to be situations where you're not going to be able to get somebody there with a noise meter, but you may have folks who are complaining, or you can't get a noise level reading with a noise meter or something. So it still creates the possibility of that. And I admit, that's a more difficult case to make, but we can all envision circumstances where you can certainly find it under those circumstances of an unreasonably loud and disturbing noise. So we did not want to remove that. Now, the county is going to remove that from theirs. Theirs is strictly going to be decibel readings. I talked to Mr. Alton this morning, and that's where they're headed. They're strictly going to go by decibels in districts. It puts in some requirements, if you're going to do it that way, for the investigating officer to look into before he decides it is a violation. And then one of the things you'll send there is the location of where you're going to measure. And this is one of those things you will have to make a choice about. In the location, I chose, I chose at the property line of the property from which the noise originates. If that's where you would take your measure, whether you'd make your determination about whether or not it's noise. The county ordinance is different. The county ordinance says at the property line of the property who's making the complaint. And that certainly would mean that if you were measuring at that property line of the property making complaint, that would be very different than going to the property line of the property where it originates unless they're right beside each other. So that's a choice you will have to make. It just made more sense to me that you would do it at the property where the noise is coming from, but there's, either way would be satisfactory. Then you get into the maximum permitted sound levels by zoning classifications and then all zoning districts. The prohibition against a noise disturbance or the unreasonably loud noises. Then you get into the decibel levels, and in the residential districts, based on the comments that have been made and what we've had, I chose during the daytime hours, 60 decibels, and nighttime hours, 55 decibels. And again, those are measured at or beyond the property line of the property which the sound originates. In the commercial and industrial zones, the decibel levels were 75 during the daytime and 65 during the nighttime. Now, the next paragraph is one where you will need to make an election. And in that one, it says, "When the zoning classification of the property where the sound originates differs from the zoning classification of the adjoining sound-receiving property, then the maximum permitted sound level will apply," which will apply will be the higher of the two. Meaning if you had a residential next to a commercial, then the commercial would apply. Again, the county is the opposite. The county says the receiving property level would apply. But you've got a big difference in commercial and residential, and you just have to figure where you're going to draw that line. The next one where you will have to make an election, noise sensitive zones, and there's a very broad definition, probably a lot broader than it ought to be, but hospitals, rest homes, healthcare facilities, churches, other places of worship, educational institutions, daycare facilities are defined as noise sensitive zones. And the levels there are much less, and you, for what can be done, basically you end up with a residential level in those areas. Then you get into the list of prohibited noise, and certainly noise which exceeds the decibel levels is prohibited. And then you've got the others about creating or causing the creation of noise disturbance, or to create or allow the emission of sound beyond boundaries of property of another, which you have a whole list of things in there that it cannot, that you can't do. And then in keeping with some of the things that were in our ordinance before and some things that we've added, we've tried to cover televisions, electronic sounds, barking dogs, a list of things that you cannot do in the town, what would be described as a noise The ordinance tries to deal with amplification system, no matter where it is, on public property or private property, so that you can regulate that. And it provides that possession of the electronic equipment raises a presumption that you operated that equipment. If somebody hears the sound coming from it, and they go there and it's not operating right at that moment, but you've got it, then it creates a presumption that you were the person who was using that and creating the noise. Construction, agricultural, lawn care, vehicle or boat repairs alike. We use the same timeframe, thanks to Mayor, that she called it, that was in the old ordinance, I think, about when you can do that, the hours that you can be operated. And basically, it's prohibited after 6:00 PM and cannot commence before 7:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and it's prohibited after 5:00 PM and cannot commence before 9:00 AM on Sunday. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Now, number six then there is important because it provides that nothing in this section shall preclude any citizen without the benefit of noise-measuring equipment or contacting a law enforcement officer from appearing before a judicial officer to obtain a warrant based on this chapter. That means any citizen in town who has a complaint can go down to the magistrate's office and swear out a warrant for the violation. And there is no requirement, you know, other than that citizen having to get to court and testify, there's no requirement for law enforcement being involved in any way, even though we have the other section in our ordinance that does allow for that. We pretty much have adopted the old ordinance that we had concerning motor vehicles and motor boats. There are some changes in the exemptions that pretty much track what we had before. One of the changes is in paragraph two about generators for production of electricity at times when electrical service has been interrupted due to natural calamity or accidental disruption. You can do that, and that makes sense to everybody. But if you're using it to produce electricity and it's not exempted by this ordinance, then you have to have a generator that'll operate within the decibel levels that are permitted in that zone. Everything else pretty much is from the old ordinance, as I recall. We made a, we kept the permit to exceed noise limitations, that people can come in and get a permit from the chief to exceed noise limitations for a limited time. And that would be if somebody was having some kind of event or something, they could come in and they could apply specifying what they were doing, where they were doing it. And it has a long list of considerations that the chief will take into account in determining whether a permit should be issued or not. The enforcement provisions, it provides that it can be enforced in accordance with our town ordinance, North Carolina General Statute 168-175 and North Carolina General Statute 14-4. And then taking into consideration some of the other comments and other codes that we were looking at, put in a provision, "When it is reasonable and practical to do so, a person or persons believed to be violating in proportion to this chapter may be given an oral order to cease or abate the noise immediately or as soon as reasonable or practical. Do so prior to being charged with the violation." You want to give folks an opportunity to comply. Of course, if they say no, you don't have to give them another chance. And if they don't comply, then you can write the citation. The other big change in how we enforce this was I changed the amount of fine. If they're charged criminally with a violation, I changed the maximum fine from $50 to $250, meaning the court has the discretion to fine the violator anywhere from zero to 250. That gives them some weight. If you come in more than once or you've done it before, they can increase that fine. Now, we could increase it up to $500. That's the maximum that the town can provide for in its ordinance, but given that we're talking about a noise violation, 250 seemed like a reasonable place to stop it. It also, also put in the ordinance, of course, just that we can enforce it by the civil remedies of abatement and injunction. If we have some place that is just continuously violating the ordinance, then the town could go in and seek to do that. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. I don't blame any rights of authorship in this. It was a collaborative effort with a number of people, and I'm not, it's what we came up with.
Can I ask a question for clarification? Going back to exemptions, where we were talking about generators.
Uh huh.
Since we've had a specific incident with a person complaining about that, would this, where we've actually had electricity cut off somewhere, this would, this would not be...
Would not fit.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, that if, unless that, unless that generator's operating within the decibels, then that would be in violation.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to make sure because...
The exemption is for natural calamity or...
That's how I read it, but I just wanted to make sure since we've received complaints about that.
Accidental disruption.
That's, just wanted to make sure.
Not just calamity, right? Which is, we've had some of them.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, for going through that with us.
Thanks, Steve.
We'll open the floor for discussion.
Yeah, I can start. Read through this. I think overall, all that worked on it did a really good job. I just have some comments and some things in here that I see that don't really work for me. We've got 7:00 to 11:00 PM is the hours that this applies to, but when we get down to number five, it's on my page eight, where you talk about construction, lawn care, things of that sort. You've got 7:00 AM to start, 6:00 PM to stop. Of course, the 7:00 AM meets the 7:00 AM that we list, which I don't think anybody should be out before then mowing their yards, but 6:00 PM to me seems early. I mean, people like me that work for a living, and I mean, a day for me, usually it might be 5:30, 6 o'clock before I get done work. Or in the summertime when it's really hot, I don't want to get out there in the middle of the day and mow when it's 100 degrees. So the 6:00 PM stop time for mowing grass seems way too early. Plus, you've got folks out there making a living mowing grass that their day goes way past 6 o'clock. I mean, I've got a person who lives down the street from me that I see her come by my house 7:30, 8 o'clock in the evenings when she's really busy. So that 6:00 PM, I think we need to really consider, because, you know, you've got people that are working late. I work a lot of Saturdays. I work a lot of Saturdays. Sundays are hard to work things in, and then even 5 o'clock on Sunday seems early. Seems like to me there should be, the weekend time should be the same. I don't see why we should cut it off an hour early on Sunday, just because it's Sunday. We're still, I can see 9 o'clock to let people sleep in, but the 5 and 6 o'clock doesn't work for me at all. I mean, you've got to think about the working man. That just doesn't give people a lot of time to be out there mowing their grass. I think we need to consider seriously expanding those times, especially since the ordinance goes to 11. I don't think we need to go to 11 o'clock, but I think something around 8 o'clock would be more reasonable, maybe not that late on...
I was going to ask if you had a recommendation.
Maybe not that late on Sunday, but I think during the week, Monday through Friday, we need to change that to 8 o'clock, to give people more time, and maybe move Sunday to 6 o'clock. But I think Monday through Friday, that really needs to change to 8 o'clock. Otherwise, chief, y'all could be visiting me.
What do you guys, let's stop for a second, if you don't mind. Paul, let's address this. What do you all think about that, expanding those times?
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I expressed the same, I think, to Meredith today. When I spoke to her, I expressed this. I have a circle around it here, so...
Okay. So the recommendation would be for five, instead of 6:00 PM, do eight?
Yeah, to 8 o'clock, and 8 o'clock on Saturday, and 6 o'clock on Sunday.
I'm not opposed.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Mary, can I? The next thing that caught my attention was the person making the complaint. I can understand Steve's point, but like at my house, I've got a neighbor that's hardly ever down, and it could be a neighbor two doors down from me making the complaint. So to me, it should be from the person making the complaint, because it might be, the person next door to me doesn't care, but the person two doors down may be more sensitive to noise, they may not like noise. So I think that needs to change, to be measured...
Are you referencing page four, section C? Is that what you're...
I'm not sure which one it is. I don't have that in front of me.
You're talking about where the, where the noise level...
Where to measure it then.
Where to measure it.
Okay. So that's C1. So instead, you're going more with what the county's looking at doing.
Right. I think it needs to be measured from the property, from the person that's making the complaint, because you may have other property owners around that may not think that the noise is that loud, that you may have somebody, you know, a door down from your next door neighbor that's making the complaint. So I think it needs to be measured from the property of the person making the complaint, not from the edge of your property.
Steve, what do you guys think about that?
I had that same thought.
I, whatever's going on doesn't preclude that person that lives two or three houses away from reporting it and questioning it.
Exactly right.
And if the noise is abated, or if it doesn't exceed at the other property line or something, I don't, I don't know. We've had complaints from, you know, people that live, you know, quarter of a mile away or something, but as I said in our last meeting, you know, you need to make a differentiation between that annoyance and a nuisance. It might be an annoyance to people three houses down, it might be a nuisance to the guy next door, because it's a violation of the law, but I don't know about changing it, but I mean, because like I said, nothing precludes that person from complaining.
No, I'm not saying that we change anything where they don't make the complaint, but I think it needs to be measured from the property of the person making the complaint.
And if you don't, the only thing, and I get that, that makes sense, with the exception of, then how do you handle it with enforcement? If you were to go back to the business and say, okay, five houses down, obviously if it's reading there, it's not, but can you, I guess I'm wondering how we work with, my thought is, if we have someone in violation, that the police will go there, explain, hey, your noise is too loud, and actually have the decibel reading in hand where they can help them determine what is the appropriate level, because it's not turn it off, it's just turn it down. So how would you navigate that?
Mayor, I think the, I think Attorney Michael's idea was that if, for instance, you have a restaurant, and the music is loud, if you measure it from their property line, you're going to get a truer reading from the decimal reading than if you go to, say, across 158 from the complainant's house, you're going to get a truer reading, because once you go across 158, you're going to get all kinds of other sounds that are going to be detected by them. So the truer reading is going to come from the property that's where the sound's emitting from, I think, in my opinion. It's going to be louder, it's going to pretty much focus on just that, that reading.
Well, what I'm thinking of, Chief, is not so much that, I'm thinking more residential, or like me, you know, my neighbors beside me are hardly ever down, so the person making the complaint's either going to be across the street, one lot down, or a lot further down the street. So if you take it at my property line, you know, there may be several vacant houses before you get to the person that's making the complaint. Same thing with the restaurant.
Yeah, but the, don't you think, I think what the ordinance he's proposing is that the house that's making the music from their property line, is that correct, Steve?
That's correct.
Yeah, and it's going to be louder from right there than if it's going to be two houses down, because then you've got a couple of houses as a barrier that's blocking the noise. So you're going to get the loudest reading from the property line that's making the noise.
No, I understand that, but the person that's making the complaint is two houses down, so of course the noise is going to be louder at the business or the house, but the person making the complaint isn't standing at the property line of the business, they're making the complaint from their house, however far away they are from the business.
Right.
So to me, if I'm complaining about noise, I'm complaining about it from my property, not standing right at the edge of the brewing station, or porter call, or whatnot. I may be two or three houses away. That's where I'm saying the noise is too loud.
And in that case, we would have to use the, the first, where it mentions the two citizens and the police officer, we would have to use that measurement instead of the noise meter, because the noise meter's going to give the most true decimal reader, and the higher decimal reader, reading from the actual noise place. So then it becomes incumbent upon us to use the other ordinance to say, well, you know, in our opinion, it's creating a nuisance.
Right. Well, I mean, this isn't that big of a deal to me, I was more making a comment on that. If the board's fine with the way it is, I mean, this is not something I'm going to make a big deal about.
Right. And Paul, just so you know how I came to that conclusion, it's pretty much what the chief said, you're going to get a much truer reading for how much noise is emanating from that place by measure of their property line. And we've set the decibel levels fairly high, and so the question is, you know, if you're trying to measure it a block away, they're really going to have to be making some noise for it to exceed the decibel level to block away.
No, I understand that. I, I don't have a huge heartache over this. I was just saying, you know, if I'm making the complaint, it's noise I'm hearing on my property, not standing where it's going to be measured from, so of course it's going to be louder where it's going to be measured from, unless you're a next door neighbor, then it's not going to be any different. So, like I said, I don't have a lot of heartache over this, and we can leave it as it is unless somebody else on the board wants to make the change as well.
No, I think to be, I think to be fair to the potential violator, he should be measured at his property line, because the further away you get, the more delicate it gets and the harder it is to deal with. That's, that's the way to say, this is, this is what the noise is, and there's no other factors in that case, except where it's making the noise. As you said, there's no ambient noise or anything else, so I think it's the property line's the proper place.
And, and I just want to make sure that when we've done this, and again, I've looked at this, but I just want to make sure that we're not really hurting our commercial business with this, because that's, that's where we've had some of the complaints, and a lot of those complaints emanate from people who are far away from that. And, and I know in looking at that, when we've taken those decibel readings, it's obviously, or it's kind of been my understanding, that maybe it's been when it's not been raging or whatnot, but I just want to make sure that if it's at the property line, it's obviously going to be much louder than if it's, you know, a quarter of a mile away. So that's, that's my only concern with being at the property line. If you're at the property line and the band's on the porch, it's, they're going to be in violation.
Well, 75 decibels is fairly high, and if you recall from the noise demonstrations and everything, I don't think we've got much above 75 decibels for anything that we got. Maybe the, the young lady who screamed.
Yeah.
Right.
She was there.
She almost broke the meter, but, but other than that, that's, that's fairly loud, and I don't want to tell you, yeah, we'll experiment with it, and we'll come back and adjust if we have to. I think 75 is pretty high, and then it goes to 70 after 11:00 PM. That's still fairly high. I know when I went out with the noise meter, the highest reading, well, from music, which was being played, right at the property line where it was being played, and admittedly it wasn't a band, it was a single person playing and singing with an amplifier, was 65.
That's all I wanted to hear.
And, and I think, which is what you were getting to, and one of the charts that was provided to us back with all of the research...
And I remember that.
It highlighted taking the sound at the property line, but also taking it, say, across the bypass, or, and then you pick up all that extra traffic, which wouldn't be fair to a business, because that would be adding to that, to that noise. So, this was good discussion, but I think, I think it's right the way it is, to be most fair to the business owners.
I didn't have a lot of heartache over that, and so I'm okay with that. Chief, I've got some questions for you. If you don't mind standing back up, please.
Yes, sir.
I was unable to make the demonstrations that y'all did, which I still want to try to come out one day and see that, but when y'all were doing your measurements, a person that speaks rather loudly like I do, what is a normal person's voice? What was the decibel level for a normal person speak, well, for a person that speaks loud? What was the decibel reading for somebody that speaks loudly?
It was, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong for those of you who were there, I think it was in the 50, 55 range, something like that.
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
Okay. Well, where I'm going with that is, what does that do to people who have cookouts, dinner parties outside? You know, when you get a group of people together, you've got one group of people that are talking, another group of people that's trying to talk over the people that are already talking. If I decide to have a cookout at my house, and I invite ten people, am I going to be over the decibel limit?
It's, it's, you know, this noise complaint in ordinance is, is more complaint driven, so we're not going to go by with our, you know, little noise meter, and, and just because you're having a cookout, having a good time, we're not going to get out and, and go to your property line and test it to see if you're breaking it. But if we get a complaint from your neighbor, we're obligated to go and investigate that complaint, and if we get out and, you know, measure the noise, and it's exceeding the limit, then obviously we have to ask you to turn your, your music down, or be quiet.
Well, I'm not talking about music, I'm talking about just people.
That's...
I mean, we can take half the people in this room and go outside, and before you know it's...
Well, because you're sponsoring the cookout, if, if your friends and neighbors, or whomever, whomever you have at the cookout is noisy, and they're exceeding the, the limit, then you have to quiet your...
Well, what I'm, where I'm going with this is, I'm not saying they're noisy, but you know what happens when you get a group of people together?
Oh, I know.
Everybody, one person starts a conversation, part of the group breaks off, starts another conversation, and then you've got people competing to be heard.
When the cops drive up, they're going to be quiet.
So, are we ready for a vote on this?
Sorry.
Are we ready, are we ready for a vote?
I still have a couple more comments.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, Paul.
No, not yet. So...
To, to answer your question, yes, if there's a complaint, then we have to investigate, and, you know, we have to ask you to be quieter, and, and that's pretty much it.
So we're going to have to tell all the citizens of our town, if they decide to have a party, they need to keep it down.
We are here to enforce the ordinance that you guys make. So you can regulate it, or, you know, impose an 85 or a higher decibel reading, but we're just here to enforce the...
And a lot of work has been put into this, to look at these noises and to listen and to, so this is, I mean, these noise, it's, you're not going to be standing right in front of your voice hearing that reading and that conversation across the microphone. So, and, and as the chief indicated, this is only complaint driven. And the reason that this whole discussion has come forward is because we've had, what, 174 complaints so far this calendar year, and we didn't have an ordinance in place to do anything about it, because it's not enforceable. So the whole goal here was to create an enforceable ordinance, but we're not going to be sending our police out to, to, you know, spy on people and create an issue. This is just to have a means to address the same issues we've had, but now have a means to address them.
No, I understand that. Like I said, these, I mean, I've missed a lot of meetings lately, so I've missed a lot of the conversation, these are just things that I've come up with. Two other quick things, chief, where one will be for the chief, one will be for the board. Under motor vehicles and motor boats, when you have somebody that alters their exhaust system and puts a loud muffler on their truck, that's going to exceed the decibel limit. It's a legal muffler, it's an alteration, it doesn't fall under disrepair. Is that going to fall under this ordinance as well? And motorcycles that come stock, like Harley-Davidson, of course, they're always loud. I've got several of those in my neighborhood. They're sold that way from the factory.
And, and I know exactly what you're talking about. In all my 20-plus years of experience and dealing with noise ordinances and stuff, normally, people that, that have after-stock mufflers, if you warn them, you know, unless it's a body shop or something, or a repair shop, that, you know, they're just testing the, the vehicle to see how loud, or unless they try to annoy the neighbors, our officers are going to use, you know, good judgment, and hopefully warn the people before they actually write them a ticket that, hey, you're annoying somebody. But, yeah, if it's, if it's a habitual thing, then they may get cited. But I've never heard of anybody citing, siphoning a person for having after-stock mufflers, and I've, I've never done it myself, so...
And the other question under that same category is boats. Bob knows, you pull a boat out of the water, and you put the muffler, the little things on it to run it and clean it out, you're going to wake the, the noise limit, but if you want your motor to last any time after running in saltwater, if you don't put those little clamps on it to wash and clean it out, there's no way that motor's going to run and not well exceed this limit.
And, and I don't have a boat, but if you could, how, how long does that normally last?
They recommend five minutes.
Yeah. So by the time the, the police get dispatched to the complaint, then I'm sure, hopefully they'll be finished doing their thing, so...
Right. Cleaning and moving on.
I, I think it's complaint driven, and I've never experienced that one either, so...
Okay. The last thing that I have is Brandy brought up about generators. Steve, one thing that we may need to address, I've put a lot of standby generators in houses, and they're the ones that cut on automatically. They go through a weekly test cycle where they run for 15 minutes every week, and go through a self-check system to make sure they're operating properly. So they're going to be running once a week. Most people set them up so they run during the middle of the day.
Yeah, I wouldn't think many of them would be running in the middle of the night.
Right. But they do, in order for them to operate properly, they go through a 15-minute test cycle every week.
Well, we did it, we did a test out here, and, Paul, and this, cut this generator on, and we were, we did it 150 feet, we did it 100 feet, we did it 75, 60, and I don't think, and look at the chart, I don't think it, it violated the decibel level.
Okay.
Not to the upper limit.
The, the upper limit.
I didn't know when we were...
Typically, those in homes, the ones that you're talking about installing, probably are fairly quiet.
Well, they're in a case. I mean, they're not loud, but they do start up and run.
Right. And this one out here is not in a case, so...
The one I was talking about is not what, like what you're talking about.
All right. That's all I had, I'll quit annoying y'all.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented with the, or as amended, rather, with the time change.
Second.
Discussion.
Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, mayor. If, if, and I, and I, I'm very much in favor of this ordinance, but I'm also going to ask something a little, a little different. If we could, if the maker of the motion would at least entertain maybe passing this ordinance with a caveat that we have, and I don't know if we can do this, and Steve, you have to help me, but we've had the public involved in this for a number of times, and a lot of the residents that have given us a lot of input. And I would, I would support this ordinance the way it's written, but... And I would, I would support this ordinance the way it's written, but with a caveat that, um, we hold a public hearing, and if there's not any controversy to this that moves forward, I don't know if we can do that, and it's approved or whatever, but we've taken that step and we've gone so far to have all these tests done, and we've weighed the public in, and we've had that. I, and now we, all of a sudden, we're gonna do it, and we're not gonna get the final okay from the public as far as a public hearing goes. I, I don't know how we do that, but.
You, you can just, I can just withdraw the motion, and then we can set a public hearing.
Uh, well, and, and that's fine, but I didn't wanna delay this, but in fairness to the public, I, I think we owe that to them.
It should be quick then, 'cause we've done this.
As I was gonna say, the only caveat I'd wanna throw in there is let's not rehash all this discussion. Unless the citizens bring forward stuff they want us to discuss.
Just respond.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, I will, I'll withdraw the motion.
So, we now need a new motion?
I'll make a motion, we set a public hearing on this issue.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Date and time.
Yes, uh, what's our first meeting in November?
It's, um, November the fourteenth.
I mean, that's the next appropriate meeting, correct?
Yes, ma'am, unless she wanted to set a special meeting for the public hearing.
Okay, that too.
I think so must be.
So, that would be November the fourteenth at seven P. M.
Seven P. M., right.
Okay, so there's a motion second, we've got the date now that will be added to the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Moving on to new business, sorry. I'm gonna turn it right over to you. First item under new business is committee, um, committees and boards. We have a number of appointments this evening, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Hogan. But before I do, I just wanna make a statement that we did do advertising to try to encourage members to get, members of the community to get engaged, and I have to say, I'm very pleased with what, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hogan's gonna present this evening. We have a number of people that have put in applications for the first time to be involved in a, in a town. We have two new committees, and I, I just think it's wonderful, so I appreciate everyone, um, that has done so. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, very briefly, I, uh, we have nineteen appointments to make tonight, and we're gonna get them all done except for the appearance committee. I have two calls out, and I don't wanna, uh, eliminate those people. I have to wait anyway, they're, 'cause they're the last two we can use. Um, I wanna, in, in interest of fairness to them, I like to wait. So, if we wanna approve this with six for tonight, then we can add another one, uh, further, further on. But, um, I don't know, um, this is one of the most difficult things I've had, ever had to do logistically. Uh, it's like, uh, I ran out of different colors and different shapes and, uh, to put down, because people applied for both committees, and some people are already on a committee, and, uh, bottom line is, I would like to make a motion to nominate the following people. To the Dangerous Animal Appeals Board, Jerry Farless, uh, to be reappointed, right? Yes, I think that's reappointed.
Yes, sir.
And on the Historic Landmarks Commission, uh, Joe Agnew and Beverly Boswell. And on the, uh, appearance commi- I'm sorry, Appearance Committee, um, Skip Jones for a three-year term, Sue Kelly for a three-year term, Linda Mogowski for a three-year term, Chris Merrick for a three-year term, uh, Clay Richardson for a two-year term, and, uh, Aaron McCall, the Director of the, uh, Nature Conservancy, offered his services for a two-year term. And then we have one more to do on there, and, uh, we'll get that taken care of at the next meeting. And the Bomb Track Site Study Committee, uh, Jerry Froelich, Jackie Harris, Derek Dow, Daryl Davies, Jim Miller, Robert Rollison, Megan Parr, I'm pretty sure that's the name, Tanya Young, and Bernard McAvoy. That's, that's the motion.
I'll second that.
Any comments? I have one comment. With my husband being one of the nominees, do I need to refrain or at least disclose that, that he's listed here under the Bomb Track Study Committee?
I think you need to disclose it, but since you're not deriving any financial benefit from any of this, that's, these are middle, middle advisory committees, I don't think that's a benefit you.
Okay, well, I will fully disclose, that is my husband.
Well, I think we need to get you to sign a document. I don't think I'm fluent in any way either.
I know that's your husband, I don't know if we wanna do this now.
Okay, any, um, other discussion?
Um, yes, ma'am, if I may please, on the Historical Landmarks Commission, one of those, um, is to fill an unexpired term through August the thir- um, August twenty thirteen, and the other is a new regular term, which expires in October, um, twenty fifteen. So, if you could state which one of those two would go into which seat.
How about, uh, Joe Agnew for the unexpired, and, uh, Beverly Boswell for the, uh, full term?
Thank you.
I'll amend the motion to, to reflect that.
Any further discussion?
No, I need to re-leave my second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those of you who are in the audience tonight that agreed to serve, thank you very much. We're happy to have you serve. Looking forward to the great committee work.
Especially the new people.
Okay, um, let's see, next.
Had some problems with his on-site wastewater disposal, and through the Health Department contacted me to determine if they could go on our system. And then that ended up, um, going to KDHW W T P, and Dr. Morris is here, and he can answer any questions.
Okay, open the floor for discussion or questions for Dr. Morris.
Well, I think the, uh, paperwork that we got shows that he will incur all expenses of the hookup. The town's not gonna incur any expenses.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, I think that's very fair then. I mean, I, I have no problem with this. He appears to be having severe problems, severe enough that the Health Department will let him hook up. If there was any other avenues, I work with the Health Department continuously, and I think if there was any other way out, this wouldn't be coming to us tonight, so evidently, um, Dr. Morris is having some serious problems, and this is the only way it can be resolved, so I would be in favor of moving this forward.
I just wanna ask if you, um, have, have looked at any of the other options, because there, there are a couple of other options. Um, you know, there's, there's an LPP system and a Pete system that, that you could also install in your yard versus hooking up to the wastewater treatment plant, and I, I just, did the Health Department talk to you about those at all?
Uh, my situation is, I've got, uh, two businesses dumping water onto my property, and it goes underwater. And when it goes underwater, then, uh, the sewage won't work, it won't perk. We've been there, uh, since nineteen seventy-six, um, and we're trying to get a solution. Mr. Goodrich, uh, looked at it, and he said that, you know, he was more than willing to sell the town the capacity so that I could hook up. Uh, we just have so much, when, when, when you get a severe rainstorm, we just, the water just comes off of McDonald's, comes out of Seven-Eleven, and it dumps into our yard, and our place gets flooded from time to time. And when it gets flooded, it just will not perk. And, uh, we've had a bunch of people look at it, and, and the solutions really are... We've been exhausted, because we have to get it pumped out all the time, and just really don't have any other way to get rid of the sewage that, that, that I know of.
Well, to, to follow up with your suggestions, Brandy, I mean, I've installed both of those systems, and, uh, this is definitely the most expensive route to go. All the Pete systems can be expensive, but if a regular conventional system isn't gonna work, the Pete systems and the others used mainly for larger sites where you have larger houses. Um, but the, the biggest issue that Dr. Morris has, which hasn't been addressed tonight, is, he's one hundred percent correct, when your septic system goes underwater, it doesn't work. And technically, his property could be condemned for the length of time that his system is underwater. Because if your septic system isn't working properly, you technically, if it's a house, you can't use the system. If it's in a business, we could technically get by and shut him down for the length of time he's underwater.
My only problem with this, with him being out of the zone of, of where we are, and I realize this is, this is the, the Kill Devil Hills wastewater treatment plant selling their, their portion of their allotment, and this doesn't come out of our seventy, seventy gallons per day. But, um, i- if, if we do it for one, or if somebody else comes up and wants one, and it's my understanding that, that we've already, you know, there is another person that lives near him that wants this as well, where, where are we gonna draw the line with this? Because there is a limit of what this ki- this wastewater treatment plant can incur, and, and we have gone over that limit in the summertime, and there are fines that are incurred when that happens. And, um, if, if we are to ever enter into a public-private partnership with Aqua America, or if we are ever to incur, to purchase this ourselves, however that works, um, it, it's not something, it's something that we need to think about for the future. Um, and, um, unless we're willing to expand that, um, I've heard two different versions. You talk to one person, and we've got plenty of gallons per day left. I've talked to Division of Water Quality in Washington, and we're, we're, we're closely reaching that capacity. So, that's, that's my only concern, is that, that we're, um, closely reaching that gallons per day that, that we need to be able to continue running that. So, if we're gonna add somebody outside of that, are we gonna say it's only gonna be him and nobody else? Where are we, where are we gonna draw the line?
Well, I think we have to take it case-by-case basis. I mean, he's in a situation right now that if he doesn't hook up, he's probably gonna have to close his business. If his system continually goes underwater, it's gonna create a problem where he's gonna have a hard time operating. I mean, and you raise a good point that when you do make an exception, you do open up the door for other people to come in, but I think it's something we need to review on a case-by-case basis. And I think this is one of those situations where there's just not a lot of choice for him. Um, like I said, I know the septic people, I know every one of them well, and I'm sure they work with him every way possible to try to find another solution for him, and basically, as I said, what it comes down to him is, he either gets a hookup, or he's gotta relocate his business.
It's his res- residence, Paul.
Or residence, I'm sorry. But, um, uh, you know, and that creates a problem where I think, you know, he's in dire need of the hookup to the system, where the next person that comes in may just want it, they may not be in the same situation that he is. And like you, I've heard the same thing with the plant, you know, there's room to expand and there's room not to. But there are, there is room that that can be expanded. 'Cause the only problem they have is they can treat more fluid, they just don't have anywhere to get rid of the water.
Correct.
We can supply them with a location to get rid of the water.
They don't have to get in compliance first, though.
Right, but I'm just saying, we have areas that they can get rid of water, which is what's holding them back.
Well, I, I'd like to recommend, or not recommend, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize this connection um, of the Morris property at sixteen Ten Wrightsville Avenue, for municipal sewer, subject to the conditions as stated.
I'll second it, Mayor.
So, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, add something. I agree with Brandy that, uh, this possibly could open the door for others to wanna do the same thing, and we, it's, there's a chance we could get into a situation where, uh, we would deny somebody, and then they may have legal recourse unless we have some, uh, some criteria set up that, uh, that would, uh, would make it, give us the legal right to, to, to not give it to them. So, and I don't know what that is, I don't know what it is or how it can be figured out, but if somebody else comes along, and a third, and a fourth, and a fifth, and then, uh, sometime, we're gonna have to say no, and they'll, they can use the line, well, you did it for the others, and they may be right.
Let's ask Steve that question.
Well, yeah, the reason you have it in front of you is because I said they couldn't do it unless you approved it, because it is outside your Southern Sanitary District, and, and you are making an exception by doing this, but you are not bound legally to do it for anyone else.
But I think we can address Mike's concerns as well. I mean, we can draw up something that, you know, has criteria where, you know, you have to meet these certain points in order to be considered, where, like Dr. Morris, where he's underwater so much, his system quits working. You know, you've exhausted all of your options with the Health Department, and you've got no other choice. I mean, we can put something in, you know, legalese that says that, and that takes care of the whole problem that Mike's concern is.
And, and thi- this is a more extreme example, the, the kinds of things that, that you want to consider. But that, you know, you probably, otherwise, you're gonna get a request from a lot of folks who are near the sewer lines who are gonna say, gosh, I'd like to tap into that, because that solves their problem for the long term.
All right, well, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Did we want to, before we move on, um, do you wanna ask Steve maybe to come up with something?
You're talking to me?
Mm-hmm. About setting the, I guess, guidelines on making future decisions. I mean, this one was based on the extremity of the situation.
No, I mean, I, I trust his expertise. I guess if it comes up again, we'll have to deal with it then.
Okay. All right, um. Next, under new business, item number three, the two thousand and twelve progress report for flood plain management hazard mitigation plan.
Let's see. Yes, ma'am, this, um, this was simply for the board and the public's information. Um, as stated, it, it has been placed on, on our website, and the report is at the Dare County Library. Um, this simply will record it into the minutes of the meeting, that it has been presented in an open meeting. No actions necessary from the board.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the, okay, great, thank you, Debbie.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number four, proposed amendments to Chapter one fifty-three zoning, recommendation to schedule for public hearing. We have two items for, excuse me, first is item A, Section one fifty-three point zero eight-two exceptions, to add exceptions for walkways located in the front yard setback. Meredith.
This is a amendment to the exception section that will provide for a five-foot wide sidewalk in the front yard setback for single-family duplex dwellings. Currently, this is allowed in the side yard, but it's not by ordinance allowed in the front yard, and it has been customary to allow for sidewalk at single-family residential's from their driveways to their front doors. And this will just allow that sidewalk to be located in their, within their front yard setback. It still counts as lock coverage and has to meet all the requirements and everything. It'll just allow it to intrude upon that fifteen or thirty-foot, um, setback in their front yard to allow them access to their house. And it, it falls with, uh, the practice of the Planning Department and most other departments, most other towns in the area.
And this went through the Planning Board and was recommended to move forward from the Planning Board?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
I just have one quick question.
Yeah, discussion.
Meredith.
Yes, sir.
Can we legally count as lock coverage items that are in the setback?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Anything within the property lines can be counted, and that's how our, our definition for lock coverage is, is, um, written. It's not just within the building footprint, 'cause we allow accessory structures and pools and all kinds of things in the setbacks. Eaves, H V A C stands, there's exceptions for several things into our setbacks right now. We just currently don't have any exceptions in the front yard. But a lot of sidewalks or walkways are being built, or have been built in the past, from the driveway area to the front door, so to speak, and a lot of those go into that front yard setback.
I just had a brain movement there, I went brain-dead, yeah, everything. Some reason I was thinking that just, just everything that was in the building footprint, it's your right.
mature, I just, everything on the site's counted.
Yes, sir.
I'll kinda erase that from the tape.
We can't do that. All right, is there a motion to schedule the public hearing? And if so, for when?
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing to add exceptions for walkways located in the front yard setback for November the fourteenth. I mean, surely we can do more than one public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Great, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item, item B, proposed amendment to Chapter one fifty-three zoning to regulate internet and/or electronic gaming operations. Again, Meredith, will you introduce this, please?
Yes, ma'am, this one might take just a second more. This is an amendment to add definitions for internet and/or electronic gaming operations, to add special regulations for those internet gaming operations, and to establish their uses in the commercial, light industrial, and light industrial and light industrial two zone. This, the board has enacted two moratoriums regarding internet cafes, or also known as sweepstakes cafes, allowing the General Assembly to enact law, which then got overturned not too long after that. And there's been several court cases in the North Carolina system that have determined that, yes, no, they're not gambling, so they are permitted, but that towns and counties can regulate them through their land use process. Ordinance in front of you intends to do that by regulating the number of machines. Well, Ray first regulating as an accessory use within a primary business, it can't be the primary business, limiting the number of machines to two machines per business. Only two machines per business complex, which would eliminate, limit it to two machines within the strip mall. So if one business had two machines, no other businesses within that strip mall could also have machines. Hours of operation would be limited to the primary business. We would require one additional parking space per machine within the business. Minimum of five hundred feet from the property line to residential dwellings, churches, any other religious business, child daycare home or facility, public or private schools, public playgrounds or park, or other principal business that has gaming equipment. And prohibit the onsite alcohol sales within the gaming area, and it has to be eighteen years of older. At the beginning of the ordinance, you'll see that there's some whereas's as to where these regulations came from. They're trying to eliminate some of the negative impacts that have been recognized by law enforcement and other communities regarding internet gaming, including parking, loitering, and increased crime in that area. So this is an attempt to regulate it, to protect the town, but also to allow the business not be prohibitive to additional businesses within the town. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And this also went through the Planning Board?
There's a lot of discussion, yes, and we're in favor of that.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's open the floor for discussion.
I have a question. I know I'm annoying the hell out of y'all tonight, but I figured I'd make my first night back memorable. Meredith?
Yes, sir.
The one question that I had to dealt with this, I mean, I think everything in here works very well. But what happens in a situation where you're in a strip mall? In the strip mall, I mean, according to this, you have to add a parking space for every machine.
Yes, sir.
Suppose you're in a strip mall that requires fifty parking places as the strip mall was built.
Yes, sir.
But they chose to build fifty-two parking places.
They're set. They have the two additional places over the required parking.
Does that, does that require like a release from the other businesses and the owner of the property? Or just because they're two over, they're good?
They're two over, they're good.
Okay.
And Meredith, I have a question. We're being, in this case, what I'm terming proactive. Are we having an issue at this? I know there's some other towns that are starting to address this as well, and I've heard from some of the other mayors, and the county is, because there's been, there have been some issues. It's my understanding, we're not in that boat. But since some of the other towns are also refining and putting in ordinances, this is a great time for us to do it proactively, because we also don't want everything flooding here. And for some of you who may not have had experience with this, I think it's very smart of us to be proactive. I was in Greenville not too long ago, and I needed to make some copies. And I was in an unfamiliar area, and I pulled in, and I saw a big sign that said, "copies." I was like, great, you know, it wasn't a Kinko's or anything, but I was like, okay, I can go in. And I should've probably thought a little bit more. The windows were tinted out, but, so I walked in, and I opened the door, and just smoke billowed out, and it was probably twenty machines of what we're talking about. And over in the corner, there was a little copier. But I couldn't stand being in there, the smoke was so strong. And it just, it was a very uncomfortable environment. And something I had never experienced before, but apparently this is popping up more and more and more. And like I said, not that all environments that have these machines are bad. I don't wanna imply that at all. But I think it's a smart thing for us to do, to be proactive, and just set, in accordance with how we want our town and how we want things to operate, that we look at this, because...
And as far as we're aware, we do not have the internet gaming operations within our town at this point. I know that there are some in Kitty Hawk, and there's some in Nags Head, and there may be a machine in Kill Devil Hills that's not been reported to us. And that being the case, there is a provision in here for games in operation or existing today, as of the date of, or as of the date of adoption, so that we can fold them in under this regulation eventually. Because we wanna minimize the effects that, you know, your experience is similar to a lot of the studies that are being done, but there's also a lot of crime. These are cash businesses, and, you know, they can be dangerous to your neighbors. And there's, the whereas's are supported by a good, healthy stack of studies that have been done in North Carolina specifically about these operations. And this ordinance also really goes hand in hand with all the other towns and counties. So we're not the most restrictive or the least restrictive. We're, all of us have come together to try to make kind of a cohesive regulation for the Outer Banks, so that no one's gonna get all of them, and no one's gonna get... So we've been working together, and the planners have been chatting and sharing, so...
And how does this, how does, one scenario I wanna describe to see where this falls in, if it falls in this ordinance or if it's not. There are like trivia games and whatnot, when you sit down and you're, you know, at a bar.
They're different, you don't win.
So they wouldn't be, right, so they're not included in this, they're...
They're predetermined prize, from what we understand.
Okay.
The ones that you feed the quarters in, and it, you know, asks you questions and stuff. You get, that's kind of like a Pac-Man game. It's a game of skill, you either know it or you don't know it. These are a game of pure chance, or sweepstakes. There's a predetermined number of winners, and Steve, correct me if I'm missing something, there's a predetermined number of winners that are built into these operating systems that are bought from companies to go own these computers. And that's why they're not falling under gambling. But there is a monetary prize at the end of them, which changes them from being the video game to a sweepstakes game where you can win things.
And that's out, great, okay, that's the technicality in the definition that...
There's a lot more technicalities that I don't understand, but...
Okay, great. All right, anyone else have any questions or discussion on this?
I was gonna ask the same question you did about those trivia games. And I guess, Steve, if somebody really wanted to press the issue on those trivia games, you can win free games, so technically...
But it's not a predetermined outcome, you have to win.
Right.
Sweepstakes is a predetermined outcome, whether you're good or bad at it, someone's gonna win, so...
Well, I'm just saying, you made the point about you had to win something of value. Well, if you win a free game, even if it's a quarter, you still won a quarter.
But you could only win that if you know the answer to the question.
Right.
It's still a game of skill, based on your knowledge.
Right.
Versus chance.
Well, I was getting at there is, so there's no way that anybody can come back and say, well, these machines meet the criteria.
You mean the internet gaming?
No, the trivia games.
No, no.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to schedule this event, this public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for the proposed amendment to Chapter one fifty-three zoning to regulate internet and/or electronic gaming operations.
Also for November fourteenth?
For November fourteenth, correct, seven p.m.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner's agenda. Mayor Protim Hogan?
Yeah, I have one thing. Oh, here it is. There was a email sent at the time by Michael Miller from Richmond, North, Richmond, Virginia. And him and his wife were visiting here, they have, they own property in Collington on Labor Day weekend. And he says, "On no less than two occasions this trip, we watched the ocean rescue team in action. Both times, I'm happy to report, turned out well. Both of the young ladies on duty entered the water and brought back troubled swimmers. The reactions and professional skills were a sight to behold. As one of the guards walked back to her stand at Carlo Street, all, if not all, all the people, if not all, were clapping her for a job well done." So often in this day and time, we hear of government waste, and some of that criticism is fair, but I can say with certainty, after watching the two young ladies in action, the money spent, whatever amount, is well worth it. It's really, his business is called enhancing the human experience. By the way, kind of ironic. I think that's all I have. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Buskey?
Ah, nothing's mine, I'm just glad to be back.
Thank you, glad you're back, welcome back. Commissioner Reubadum?
Just want to make everyone aware, as I'm sure you are, that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and want to say congratulations to all the survivors and those that are currently fighting breast cancer, and just make everybody aware of that. And I also want to thank Kill Devil Hills Police Department again. They, we had an incident at the bomb center, and I wanted to make everyone aware that the response time was almost instant. I called the, and believe it or not, it was not because I'm a commissioner, because ironically, the little guy that responded had no clue. And I found that out after he asked me if I was a volunteer there, so... That actually was a good thing, so, but at any rate, they responded instantly. I did call the, I called the station first, and there were no officers here, so I unfortunately had to call Central, so the world knew, but I tried. So it was, it's good to know that y'all are here when I need you, and the incident was resolved as peacefully as it could have been. And again, thank you, y'all are doing a great job, and thanks.
One thing I would like to add, if you're finished.
Yes.
I've had a chance to watch a lot of TV lately, and child bullying has become a very big topic lately. And October now is officially Child Bullying Month, where all the states are getting together to try to do something to stop the bullying of children in our schools and neighborhoods. So October is now officially, I don't know what the exact name for it is, but it's been designated Child, Don't Bully Child Month, or whatever they wanna call it.
Like bullying prevention, but yeah.
Yeah, so I thought that was something good that came out of our government lately, that they do recognize that this is becoming more and more of a problem all the time.
And there is a really good movie that I've not seen yet, that we're trying to get to, to the Outer Banks, that I know was shown at Kelly's a couple of weeks ago at seven o'clock. For, it's for parents and for children, but the age on the children's a little higher than what my child is, so I didn't get a chance to see it, but I've heard really, really good things about it. So I think that's something that we're, I'm on a committee that's trying to get it back here again, so...
Well, it's really scary, and I've had a lot of time to watch TV. You watch the morning shows, watch Sixty Minutes, it's been all over the news. And it's not just children bullying children. I mean, they've had some good videos that people have taken of adults bullying children. So it's not limited to just kids alone.
Okay, next item is Mayor's agenda. I just have one thing, which is to remind everyone now of the public forum for the twenty-fourth of this month. As Mayor Protim Hogan indicated, it is a public forum, so it's open to everyone, but we are focusing our efforts that evening on issues of concern or interest to business owners. So please help us spread the word, and it'll be, typically when we hold our public forum-type discussions, it's a more casual-type meeting, where we're all around a table or something like that, versus us up here at the, behind the big barrier. So please, please come here and help us, help you and work with you on issues.
This is for our protection.
Okay, that's all I have this evening, so we'll move on to Town Manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Town Attorney's agenda?
Nothing for you.
Okay, Consent Agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. On the Consent Agenda this evening, we have four items. The first is the approval of the minutes from the September tenth, two thousand and twelve meeting. The second, or three budget amendments. One is to record contributions to purchase a canine bulletproof vest. The second is to record Government Access Channel Grants, three, four, and five, and to rebudget Government Access Channel Grant Funds that were remaining at the end of the fiscal year two thousand and twelve. North Carolina Division of Archives and History Records Retention and Disposition Schedule from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, or for North Carolina municipalities. We originally adopted this back in nineteen eighty-eight, and from time to time, it is amended. The approval of the Consent Agenda this evening will show the boards re-adopting this with the new schedule. This allows for the town to dispose of records in a manner that doesn't exceed the provisions of the schedule. And then lastly, amended application for grant funding through the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau. At the last meeting, the September the tenth meeting, the board did authorize application through the Visitors Bureau for special funds for improvements relating to the OBX Xmas. But due to time constraints, the application was actually submitted through a separate program, which the funds for that are fifty percent if the grant is awarded. And I think we determined today that we should know something about that in next month, in November.
There is a new update on that. An email from Commissioner Hogan. Mr. Wurth said that the meeting that started, that the Grants Committee will be meeting on Friday to consider that application. So we may hear, we may actually hear something, if not get official notification prior to November.
When the Grants Committee meets, do they approve the grant? Or does it then go back to the, to the Visitors Bureau Board?
It has to get back to the full board.
They recommend the approval, and the Visitors Bureau will meet in January. It's their next, I think, believe it's their next scheduled meeting. But it's, Paul Wright, it's kind of a rubber stamp. The Grants Committee makes a recommendation, and very rarely, if ever, does the full board go against that.
Right, okay. But we wouldn't get official, we wouldn't know officially until the full board met.
Right, it's kinda like our Planning Board, they go, they review everything, and then when they make their decisions, it comes before the full board of the Tourism Bureau. And then they're the ones that officially vote on it, and whether or not it gets accepted or denied.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, with that, staff recommends approval of Consent Agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
May I ask one question for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
If they don't make their decision till officially till January, but this is for this funding that, so would we not be able to use that for this year, for Christmas, or...
We, it would not, it would not be work that would be completed for this OBXmas, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, I have one other question. I know this is gonna sound awful silly, but when you read through the Consent Agenda, Dana, this bulletproof vest is for the canine, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure y'all were having this dog protect the officer, and this was a bulletproof vest for him.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next is the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening at public comment? No? Okay, all right, well, thank you. With that, we will make a motion, someone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any further, any further discussion or items? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.